Good afternoon, I apologize for my tired illness. I picked up the wrong book at home and had to go back. It rarely happens, but in any event, welcome. Let me call the meeting of January 24, 2017, the 4:00 p.m. meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Galbraith.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Chair Kissner.
Here.
Commissioners Parker. Absent. Monette.
Here.
Sweeney. Absent.
Okay, at this point, let me call Mr. Pablo Zatterin up for his presentation.
Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Pablo Zatterin. I'm the Executive Director with Fair Housing Napa Valley. This is Tito Carranza. He is a fair housing specialist and case manager with our agency and will be assisting me with today's presentation. So today we'll be covering some --
Assistant to the Director.
Yes, sorry. So today we will be covering agency services and programs, general housing trends that we've observed at the agency, as well as some solutions, especially regarding affordable housing. So with that, I introduce you again to Tito.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. At Fair Housing Napa Valley, we have a few different programs that we use to educate and help the community. Our first program would be our Fair Housing Program, which helps to eliminate discrimination and ensure equal housing opportunities for all. And how we do that, we do that through investigations, education, counseling, and advocacy for those that need help, and that would help us ensure equal housing. We also have a tenant landlord program to assist with disputes, which would, again, educate both sides, attendants and the landlords, concerning any problems that arise, as we know that in any types of relationships, there's always, not everyone always sees eye to eye. So we try to assist in stepping in and not letting maybe molehills become mountains, if I can say it that way, again, through educating people and counseling. Also providing information on rights and responsibilities through that. And then also too, we do, with both programs, we do help folks with mobile homes, mobile home parks. Again, that is a little bit different type of animal, if you'd like to say it that way. So we do step in and assist with that. And we administer the City and Napa Mobile Home Park Memorandum of Understanding.
And if I may, our Fair Housing Program is the agency's primary program. So we are funded federally to conduct those types of services or those related services. As Tito mentioned, that includes investigation, counseling, advocacy, and educational services. Our landlord-tenant program is primarily funded locally, and that, as Tito also mentioned, involves the same types of services, but these are cases that are more so related to your 30- and 60-day notices, nondiscriminatory-related cases that may arise, habitability and repair concerns, other housing-related questions that don't involve the presence of discrimination.
All right, next slide. Okay. For our housing providers, we go through policies and practices as trained professionals. We assist in helping both parties, understanding their rights and responsibilities, also through mediation and conciliation of disputes. Again, folks don't always see eye to eye, so we try to help folks meet there in the middle. Again, training and education regarding discrimination in housing. Again, it comes back to rights and responsibilities. Everybody, whether your landlord or tenant has rights and responsibilities, we just try to help people understand what those are. All right. As far as services that Fair Housing Napa Valley offers, again, victims of discrimination, we educate them of their rights and responsibilities. We also review complaints to establish fully jurisdictional cases, again, through investigation to corroborate whether there is a presence of discrimination, and then we follow through on that. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, to kind of add on to what Tito is explaining, the services that we offer housing providers, as shown on the previous slide, are very similar to what we offer tenants or those that are alleging that they've been victims of discrimination. So it's not just a review and a counseling with them of what their rights and responsibilities are, it's assessing their actual complaint, to assess it for the presence of discrimination, and then to carry out the right investigation to corroborate that allegation. And as the fourth bullet point will note, at that point, if an allegation has been corroborated, we then prepare it for administrative enforcement with either HUD, the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, which covers state-protected categories, or a private attorney if necessary. If we are able to avoid that situation, which in most matters we are, our final step towards resolving a complaint or an allegation would involve conciliation and advocacy. So if the violation in question is not egregious in nature, there is some general willingness by both parties to address the matter, then we may seek to mediate the complaint and have it resolved in that manner. After a complaint is settled, we always monitor it. So depending on what the terms of the settlement are, whether it be a month or two of forgiven rent, or whether that settlement carries out for a number of years, we maintain contact with both the tenant and the respondent to make sure that all terms of the settlement are being complied with.
All right. On this next slide, ladies and gentlemen, these are the protected classes, broken up into two groups, federal and state of California. Under federal, we have race, color, religion, ethnicity. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll touch on a couple after Tito finishes.
Also sex, orientation, and identity included, disability, and familial status.
So these classes, everybody, this is covered nationwide, and these are enforced depending on whether it's housing or employment. Employment, the federally protected classes are a bit different, but in housing, these protected classes and any allegations of discrimination on this basis will be covered by HUD, and that is who funds our Fair Housing Grant to conduct this type of work. Ethnicity refers to national origin, which doesn't necessarily refer to your race or your skin color, but what nation you or your family is from. You'll note in the state column that ancestry is also included. This is an additional protection to the national origin protection provided under the federal guidelines. With sex, orientation, and identity, that is a fairly new protected category. It was previously just gender, so harassment or discrimination based on gender. Orientation and sexual identity were added in 2015, I believe, or late 2015, early 2016. And lastly, the other one that I'd like to touch on on the federal side is familial status, and that simply refers to the presence of children in the household. So if discrimination occurs due to the presence of children, we might open a complaint on the basis of familial status.
All right, folks, to continue with the classes under the state of California, again, these are in addition to the federal statutes. We have age, ancestry, medical condition excluding disabilities, marital status, arbitrary characteristics, genetic information, and also source of income.
And the state-protected classes are meant to supplement what is already present under federal protection. So as I mentioned, age, for example, is not protected federally under housing, but it is protected federally for employment. So the two categories do change a bit. Ancestry, again, is related to national origin, and arbitrary characteristics is one that doesn't come up very often, but does occur from time to time, and that simply means discrimination based on a consistent arbitrary characteristic. So whether the housing provider does not like to rent to people with tattoos, or people who may be auto mechanics, or whatever the reason may be, that would fall under arbitrary, and really, again, is designed to be sort of a catch-all category if documentable discrimination is taking place. Genetic information is somewhat related to medical condition, but is more so based on someone's medical history. And source of income, I would say, is the most common state-protected category that we come across, and that is simply fairly self-explanatory, but discrimination based on how you earn your income. To clarify, Section 8, for example, would not fall under this category, because as a rent subsidy, it is not considered income. So I'd like to discuss, just very briefly, some housing trends that we've observed. Thank you, Tito. And some of this information is residual from what was presented last year, but has been updated with 2015 figures. All of the figures that you see on the following slides were either, I'm sorry, were either referred to from the city's housing element, updated housing element, U.S. Census data, or the general plan. So what we have noticed is that there generally is a shortage of rental housing in Napa County, and St. Helena is no different. And some of the reasons for that are found on the first two bullet points. The county's population has increased by nearly 6,000 people since 2010, assuming by now it's over 6,000, and this city's population has increased by roughly 300. During that time, 700 new housing units were built in the county, and 26 were built in St. Helena, 60% of which were single-family homes. I mentioned that last figure to point out that single-family homes are not as likely to accommodate as many residents as necessary, and given the housing crunch, the difference between what can accommodate a larger group of residents versus what can accommodate a family or individual resident becomes more stark. And so as we also note, there were 10 affordable housing units built in the city of St. Helena since 2007. There are 16 more that are approved for development, including the McCorkle and Brinkel projects, which is great news. Unfortunately, as we see, it may not be enough. And so what we start to also look at are other factors besides simply what's being built and changes in population. And if you look at the fact that 43% of housing in this city is occupied by renters, coupled with the median income found on this slide, as well as the median home value during that same time, it becomes readily apparent that homeownership may not be the best option for all residents or even most residents. And so it becomes even more important at that point to really look into other housing strategies that are going to not only fulfill the needs of residents, but maintain the city of St. Helena as an inclusive city. To summarize, I would say that, as you can see, the increase in demand as a result of limited housing stock, coupled with, you know, limited available land for further development, I know that in this city particularly, that is a challenge, based on the layout of the city itself, but what that results in is increased rents and land costs. So it becomes more expensive to develop and build on land, and it becomes more expensive to rent. We have had multiple instances of rents that are doubling and tripling for residents, not just in this city, but all over Napa County. So it is a very, very real problem. And oftentimes, what we see happen is these residents have no choice. I'll talk more about the effects of some of these trends in just a little bit, but that, to me, is the overarching thing here, is that the numbers don't add up to support the current housing need. And I know that this is not news to anybody in this room, but it bears repeating based on the work that is still left to be done. In addition to the competitiveness of the rental market, or perhaps as a result of, we are also seeing, as I mentioned, increases in rents, but also a resulting increase in no-cause evictions, meaning 60-day notices that are served to tenants who may have been living in their current unit for months or years for no reason, other than they may want to raise the rent, they may want to make a renovation to then increase the rent, or for any other reason. This, to me, as far as landlord-tenant issues go, is one of our most common issues. It really affects, I would say, at least two or three tenants that contact the agency per day that have either received a 30- or a 60-day notice, and the difference mainly being how long they've either been in the unit, or what type of lease they're under, where a 30-day notice may be sufficient in lieu of a 60-day. So this particularly puts residents of low, very low, and extremely low income at risk. And as I mentioned, a lot are being priced out of this region, not just the city or the county of Napa, but the region itself. We see a lot of people moving to Solano County. We see a lot of people considering moving even further out. Moving into the Bay Area isn't necessarily an option for many either, based on the home prices and rental prices that we have further south to us. To highlight that point, 78% of St. Helena employees live outside the city. 48% of St. Helena renters are living at or under a low-income, were living at or low-income status in 2010. That number has gone up to 50, or, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. That number is at 59 for the county. For this particular information, I was not able to find updated data, so I apologize for the outdatedness, perhaps, of this data, but there was nothing more recent available. So to repeat, 48% in 2010 of St. Helena renters were living at or under the low-income threshold. That was 59% for the county. I would surmise that that number has increased for both the city and the county at this point. And as we have somewhat mentioned, but as is the focus of this agency, this especially affects households of members of protected classes. And for us as an agency, what we've noticed is this most likely will affect a disabled household, a household with children, a senior household, or a limited English proficiency Hispanic household. These four groups are among the most vulnerable in the county, and they are to whom we focus a lot of our efforts on, to ensure that they are receiving not just information on the services that we offer, but that they know that there are resources available to them. If our agency is not able to provide those resources, then we know of a community partner that can. So whether that be with rental assistance, with needing assistance, with any other housing-related matter that we cannot provide them help with, they at least have a way into the door with us, and we can then refer them to the appropriate partner agency when the time comes. Seniors especially, I would say, not just in St. Helena, but up Valley in general, are particularly vulnerable. We saw this quite a bit following the South Napa earthquake in 2014. Our agency did a lot of work in the mobile home parks in the city of Napa, but all over the county of Napa, and there were many, many seniors in the city of Napa that faced damaged units, but a lot of seniors up Valley that were not aware of what condition their mobile home was in. And the program that we administered through funding with the Napa Valley Community Foundation provided low-income residents in the mobile home parks, almost half of which ended up being senior when it was all said and done, that needed either new bracing, or that needed repairs for damage following the earthquake. And bracing for mobile homes refers to the system put in place that secures the mobile home into the ground. So our program was able to help over 1,000 households, both with repairs to damaged mobile homes, as well as mitigating damage for residents in need. But as I mentioned, it highlighted this need, and especially among seniors, both in St. Helena, but also in Calistoga and other areas of Valley. The other obstacle or varying factor that we find are physical and cultural barriers, especially with disabled tenants and Latino tenants. We find that they are not always aware of their housing rights, they are not always aware of their responsibilities as tenants or as housing providers. And so because of that, we run into a lot of issues that are easily fixed with the adequate education regarding a particular issue. So a lot of what we strive to do is to inform clients, inform housing providers, inform tenants of what their responsibilities are in a given circumstance, and that, a lot of times, helps alleviate the initial allegation with which they came in. So the effects that we've noticed due to the aforementioned factors are, number one, community upheaval. I know that sounds dramatic, but in a lot of cases, we are seeing whole housing complexes, particularly in the city of Napa, that are being replaced with a whole new set of tenants. And we are talking about 12, 16 units being replaced at a time due to rising rents. So it really does change both the dynamic of that complex or of that housing structure, but also the dynamic of that particular neighborhood. And it affects those residents that had to relocate as well. Changes in schools are part of the problems, and commuter traffic is also affected by a need to relocate. We've also noticed an upsurge in unlawful detainer cases heard by the court systems. Unlawful detainers are the legal eviction process. So this happens after a tenant has received their 30- or 60-day notice, and they have failed to move out in the given amount of time. The legal eviction process then starts. That tenant then has the eviction on their record for 10 years, making it extremely hard for them to find a second home. So it is a self-fulfilling prophecy in a way, that once this eviction starts, their ability to find alternative housing, whether it's for one person or a family, it becomes that much more difficult, and especially in the current housing market, both in Napa and surrounding regions, it drastically affects their ability to relocate. Overcrowding is also another issue that we've come across more commonly in recent months. This especially affects renters. Unfortunately, there are a lot of families and a lot of households that cannot afford to rent a unit on their own, and so they end up crashing with family, with friends, they stay on a couch, and what we see a lot of times is that occupancy standards are not abided by. This becomes a lease violation, and not only puts the, call it, couch surfer at risk, but it also puts the lessee at risk as well, because they're not violating their own lease. So this is another issue that we try to work with both housing providers and our clients with. In terms of overcrowding, generally what we try to do is address the matter as soon as possible while working with whatever flexibility we have from that housing provider. As long as there's not a stringent deadline in place, typically, we're able to relocate the necessary amount of inhabitants so that nobody loses their housing. This may not be the best long-term solution for whoever may have to vacate, but we at least try to find a short-term solution so that that person isn't left either homeless or looking for another couch or room to sleep in. This also brings me to the next issue, which is illegal housing. And this can happen as a result of a couple of factors, one of which, fairly obviously, is the neglect or failure to report needed repairs by tenants. This can also be done by housing providers. Housing providers that are aware that their tenant is in need of the housing that they currently have may not be as apt to respond, or may not be as quick to respond to a repair request, knowing that they, you know, they have a little bit of leverage on their side, that if there is a problem, they can file a 60-day notice, be done with that tenant, and re-rent it at a higher rent, which is very, very likely at this time. Illegally constructed housing is something that we are seeing more and more of, so housing constructed by tenants, either added rooms, converted garages. These types of situations come with a slew of risks, most notably health and safety risks. In a converted garage, you may find extension cords that power different appliances, you may find illegal wiring, or you may find other related construction or electrical-related risks that not only put the homeowner, but they put that actual tenant at risk. One notable case happened here in St. Helena, the Saldana case, where we had a homeowner who built housing and was providing housing to various farmworkers from the area. This was short-term housing, but upon inspection, it was determined that much of it was illegal. Unfortunately, to my understanding, the way this case was brought about was because one of the tenants was living in an attic, and he passed away up there, due to the conditions. So it was only after that that our agency became involved, that the city of St. Helena became involved, and the issue was resolved after some time, but it really highlights what some of the risks of illegal housing can be. And related to all of this are habitability issues. So if you have a converted garage, that's technically not a habitable dwelling, that can be red-tagged, and those tenants can be forced to move out that very day. So it behooves not just the city, but county-wide, for agencies to allocate appropriate and adequate resources to address all of these issues. Some are much easier addressed than others, I realize this, but each one of them contributes to the current housing crisis that we see, and/or is an effect of the housing crisis. So the next few slides are pictures to show some examples of housing conditions that we've come across in conducting inspections of various units. This is a severe example of black mold. Mold, especially at this time of year, and especially given the storms that we've just had, is going to be an issue for the coming months. So we are expecting more and more of these calls. Mold in particular is a little bit trickier of a matter to resolve, but there is a process that our agency has, and so anybody that is experiencing those types of problems, I would encourage them to call Fair Housing Napa Valley. This is an example of fungus growth on a carpet, or inside of an actual dwelling. And so this could be due to a number of reasons. Not knowing exactly which property this was, I would guess that it was either due to some sort of break in the window, or some sort of exposure to the outside where moisture is able to get in, but it also is very clearly neglect on the part of the tenant, in that this did not happen, or does not typically happen overnight. And so there is a responsibility by the tenant to report these types of issues in a timely fashion, so that our agency and the appropriate people can work to address it. This was, I show this picture simply as an example of what we came across following the South Napa earthquake in 2014. Though most of the houses have been rebuilt or rehabbed to being habitable, there are still a lot of houses out there that suffered damage, especially on the interior, that has not been addressed. We still run into clients that ask us both about the previous program to mitigate, to provide disaster mitigation, as well as repairs, but also who are just simply seeking some sort of resource to finish the repairs on their mobile home that was not completed following the earthquake. This is an example of exposed siding on a single-family home. This type of issue can invite rodents, it can invite pests, it exposes the inside of the home to some of the elements, although clearly, there is still some insulation there. But it would also, depending on what the condition of the interior of the home is, it could render the property uninhabitable. So it's important to note, these types of issues are enough to get the property red-tagged, where the tenant would then have to vacate, and you are now dealing with a new problem, not just the repair that needs to take place, but now that landlord is responsible for, at least temporarily, housing that tenant elsewhere. This is an example of a makeshift bathroom that was being used following an incident in this property, which resulted in water leaking all over the inside. This bathroom was still in use. As you'll note, the shop vac is in there, they were still working on getting the water out, but upon further review, you notice that this bathroom is not your typically-situated toilet, I guess. And so we had city code enforcement come out, inspect that property. This property was given a compliance order to address the issues related to both This property was given a compliance order to address the issues related to both the layout of this bathroom, the exposure of the pipes, the exposure of the wiring, and the presence of paint and other chemicals in what was, you know, being used quite commonly throughout the day. This is a broken window. Nothing notable about this particular window, other than it is a very common issue that we see, and again, is an issue that is enough to get a unit red-tagged. If a unit is being exposed to the elements, along with failure to have heat and hot water and electricity, obviously, those are some of the quickest ways to get your property red-tagged. And so, whether you yourself are a housing provider, or a landlord, or for general information, these are one of the issues that can result in immediate red-tagging of a property if not addressed. This is a picture of a temporarily-modified shower fixture. The landlord in question had not bothered to finish repairing the shower, and so the tenant got resourceful and had these grips to help turn the shower on. Obviously, not code-compliant in any way. The landlord in this case also received a compliance order from code enforcement, and this issue was resolved. But an issue as minor as this can result in a water leak, which can bring us back to this. So, a small issue becomes a big issue very, very quickly. And that would be one of my biggest points to emphasize regarding these pictures, is that if not addressed immediately, a small issue with moisture becomes a bigger problem, a small leak, well, can result in mold, and can result in what you see here. This photo is of exposed carpeting. Another code ordinance is that exposed carpeting that presents a tripping hazard is sufficient for a compliance order, possibly, depending on other circumstances, enough for a red-tag, at least for a compliance order. And what that would mean for the homeowner in this case is to repair that carpet, they're going to need to temporarily relocate their tenant. What we seek to avoid is those types of issues, where housing in a very tight rental market is sought for a short-term reason. If we are going to relocate somebody, we want it to be for the long term, we want that person to be able to stay housed in Napa. And so, these types of minor issues, that as I mentioned, can become bigger problems, are both easily avoidable and something that the agency seeks to address as soon as it comes in contact with them. This is an example of water damage and of an exposed smoke detector, exposed wiring from a removed smoke detector. Another example of a code violation, the water damage that you see along the ceiling there contributed to the removal of that particular smoke detector, but it nevertheless is a code violation and will result in an order for that housing provider. And lastly, I thought twice about posting this picture. These are, obviously, cockroaches. Rodents, and especially at this time of the year, given the weather outside, rodents and pests become a big problem. And so, if not, again, addressed in a timely manner, these issues can become infestations. If you're talking about an apartment complex, you may be talking about multiple units infested instead of just one or two. So, again, we seek to avoid all of these issues by encouraging clients to contact us immediately when they arise, and we get in contact with the appropriate people, including the housing provider, to make sure that they're all addressed. And lastly, I'm sorry, this is the last picture, I promise, is another picture of mold, another severe picture of mold. This was in a bathroom, and due to the tenants never opening the windows, this is what developed. And so, this again takes me back to our advising and counseling, not just housing providers, but also tenants, of what they can do to ensure that they maintain their property. This is a tenant responsibility. It's their responsibility to ventilate their house after a shower, after the presence of any moisture is brought into the home, to make sure that mold like this does not develop. It then becomes the problem, though, of the housing provider and the tenant in getting it addressed. And in mold that is this severe, you can often find a situation where the tenant has to relocate, even if temporarily, forcing more of an effort on both the housing provider, our agency, and also the tenant themselves. So, with that, we talk about now options. Options for tenants, given the limited rental market, both in St. Helena and the county. Napa Valley Community Housing is one of our agency's closest partners, but they currently have a waitlist of over 600 residents for their properties. They are also concurrently running a home-sharing program with the Housing Authority of the City of Napa. That program, while I've heard good things, is also still in its pilot stages, and it also, the home-sharing, as many of these other options will show, are not going to be the only solution for the housing crisis that we have right now. It's going to take a combination of home-sharing, of different policy changes, of different strategies, to really put a dent in this housing crisis. So, if you take anything away from this presentation, please keep in mind that there's no right way to go about it, there's no wrong way to go about it. It really is going to be based on what the city needs, and more importantly, what the residents need. So, the Housing Authority is also an affordable housing option, but their waitlist is thousands of people long and is approximately six years now to come up for consideration for a voucher. Also not a likely choice for somebody, for a low-income household seeking some sort of resource. A Place2Live provides a home-sharing program as well, and they provide somewhat of a matchmaking service. We've heard somewhat good things. Again, they are part of the solution, they are not the solution. And then, you have local affordable housing advocates and developers. One is sitting in the front row here, Calistoga Affordable Housing, with whom our agency works closely. I put our town, St. Helena, on this presentation, given their relevance to the work being done here locally. They have a number of locally-effective strategies and have been able to implement them. And just to touch on a couple of them, I particularly like their two-pronged approach of preserving and building. That is maintaining existing rental housing through deed restrictions and other manners, but also promoting homeownership and promoting the continued maintenance, or promoting homeownership and promoting income-based rentals and the development of income-based rental housing. It will take, as I mentioned, a multiple-pronged approach. I don't know if it's only two, if it's three, if it's five, but you need to not only maintain the housing in place, but also ensure that whatever is being built is allocated adequately to residents in need, specifically, LMI residents, meaning low- and moderate-income residents. Our town, St. Helena, also promotes the use of sweat equity, which I like and agree with, the idea that having residents physically put in effort to build their own housing, I think, is a way of getting local buy-in, is a way of cutting costs. And so, it can be an effective strategy, depending on who your clients are going to be, who your audience is going to be, that may be something that works. And finally, diversified funding. As I mentioned, St. Helena has 16 units up that have been approved for development. One of those is on Branko Court. And in speaking with our town, St. Helena, regarding that particular project, they have at least five major sources of funding for it, meaning that they're not putting all of their eggs in one basket to make the project move forward. If there's a lapse on one side, then they may be able to make it up from another source, and vice versa. And one of those examples is the use of USDA rural development loans, which, these funds, in particular in St. Helena, can be used to build farmworker housing, but are especially relevant, given all the ag land that surrounds the city. That may be a more effective use of funds than your typical urban grant application, given the particular dynamics of not just the city, but of the Up Valley region in general. And so, to discuss a couple of other policy solutions, just to be very clear, before I go into these strategies, Fair Housing Napa Valley supports any of these strategies if they are the right fit for your community, specifically, St. Helena and Napa County. But we are not affordable housing experts. Our expertise is in fair housing rights and landlord-tenant rights. And so, these are solutions that I have researched, that have worked for other areas. I'll give some examples of those. But again, if you have other questions regarding affordable housing, I'm happy to chat with you after the meeting or outside of the meeting. My card is found on the table as you walk into the meeting room. So, the first inclusionary policy, and I mention these as inclusionary policies, in that they are policies that work to make already-existing housing more inclusive. So, there's not necessarily a need to build more housing, it is already working with the stock that we have in place. The first of which may not apply too much to St. Helena, but is single-room occupancy, so the conversion of a high-density hotel or similar structure for use as multifamily dwellings. San Francisco has been a big proponent and user of this strategy. Chinatown, I think, has the most single-room occupancy hotels in the country, per given district. The second one is one that is in use in St. Helena, as well as other areas up Valley. And that's...
So, is there, what does a single room entail? Does it have cooking facility and all this? So, is it self-contained, or is there a communal area within this?
Thanks for asking. And so, to clarify, it's typically, everybody has an individual room, but the facilities are common. So, there are common bathrooms, there are common kitchen areas, and there are common living or leisure areas. And as I mentioned, San Francisco has been a big proponent of these. There are different ways to go about converting these units, there are different ways to go about designing them, you know, some may have common areas, some may not, depending on what works for that particular project. The second possible solution are secondary units. And secondary units, or granny units, as they're more commonly referred to, are not only common in St. Helena, they're common in Calistoga, and they're common in other areas of Napa, and I think are a great idea and a great way to use existing housing to provide a dwelling, if it's not for a single person, then for a small household. This is something that I found both in the St. Helena housing element, but also in housing elements from around the Bay Area. So, it's not a new strategy by any means, but I believe that if implemented effectively, it's definitely one of the more efficient ways of using existing housing. Inclusionary zoning, so that refers to zoning, and this is also found in the St. Helena housing element, that refers to revision of zoning ordinances to make development easier for affordable housing projects. This may also include the rezoning of districts for multi-use. So, again, using the ag, and as I mentioned, I'm not, this is getting kind of out of my area of expertise, but using the ag example, being able to use USDA rural development dollars, because on ag land, they can develop, and it can be zoned as such. Other areas of Napa that may have been zoned, Napa County, that may be zoned as agricultural or commercial, may be rezoned as mixed-use and may provide additional land for the development of affordable housing. And, I'm sorry, one other example regarding zoning is that the percentage has to be, there is a specific percentage, in order for it to be eligible for inclusionary zoning ordinances, there would have to be a specific percentage of units within the project that were affordable housing, or below-market rent, or for LMI individuals and households. The city of San Bruno, very interestingly, currently has an inclusionary zoning policy, where 15% of any development has to be below-market rate housing. And within that 15%, another 40% has to be allocated towards very-low income, so the lowest of, the middle rung of the income level ladder, and the rest for low income, meaning that at least 40% are designed for those at 30% median income or lower. And we believe that that's a great policy. Again, it works for San Bruno, it may not work for St. Helena, or it may not work for the city of Napa, or it may not work for Napa County, but we want to mention them as possible strategies. Moving on to incentives for developers, I will lump in the first couple together and discuss them together. Waiver impact fees, refer to fees placed on developers due to the size of the project, based on the size of the project sometimes, based on the amount of work that needs to be done, based on the effect of other local infrastructure. So, there would be a fee placed on that developer. Waving of impact fees, when a developer produces a sufficient amount of affordable units within their development, is a way to incentivize both private, but also possibly nonprofit developers. Portland, Oregon, in particular, is a city that exempts all affordable housing development from waiver fees. So, again, another idea for the city, it may work, and it may need some tweaking to fit this particular set of circumstances. Density bonuses refer to a bonus which allows a developer to build at a higher density if they are including affordable housing units in their project. So, the city of New York, for example, put in an extremely, in their words, proactive density bonus initiative, and that resulted in the production of 2,700 affordable housing units between 2005 and 2013. Now, New York City and St. Helena are about as opposite as you can get on the size spectrum, so I understand that those numbers are not realistic, but it gives you an idea of what is possible if the right strategy is implemented effectively, but also carried out in the long term in an efficient manner. And I think New York has proven that they were able to do that. 2,700 units in eight years is about 300 units, more or less, per year. And so, that is a great number and a lofty goal. Other tax exemptions, other tax exemptions can incentivize affordable housing developers, including nonprofits and community development corporations. Again, using the city of Portland, Oregon, as an example, they have what they call a nonprofit low-income limited tax exemption. So, this refers to a general exemption of all taxes placed on developers when they are developing the sufficient amount of affordable units. In line with that, there is also the use of low-income housing tax credits. This is used to incentivize private equity, so private dollars that may come in from developers, where developers get a dollar-for-dollar-per-capita tax credit. And this is actually the most common strategy for developing affordable housing in the nation. The research I did said that 90% of all affordable housing projects in the country are at least partially funded through some form of LIHTC. Okay. For additional policy solutions, there is a no-net-loss strategy. This may be something that works for the city of St. Helena. A no-net-loss strategy refers to a strategy that's implemented wherein it ensures that for every, for any unit, any affordable unit that is converted to single-family or non-income-based housing, that another one is developed. And so, what that does is it ensures that there is no loss of affordable housing units for that city or county in any given year. One example of this, and again, this is a larger city, so it may not apply directly to St. Helena, but an example of this is the Jordan Downs Urban Village Specific Plan in South LA. This is near the Watts Metro Station, and it is part of their revitalization efforts. So, they want to ensure that there is no affordable unit lost to development. This is a somewhat gentrifying area, and so they are hoping that this policy will ensure that anything that happens to the conversion of any affordable housing unit will result in the development of another unit to take its place. in the development of another unit to take its place. Additional policy solutions or additional solutions in general can now look, we can look a little bit more locally at them. And one of the biggest ones that I think could go a long way in meeting the goals of our town, St. Helena, of our agency, of Calistoga Affordable Housing, in maintaining the existing rental stock, is to provide adequate resources for city and county code enforcement. They are our frontline whenever a repair or habitability case is brought to us. We cannot enforce code, we cannot provide a compliance order, only city or county code enforcement can do that. You know, depending on the time of year, they may be more busier or more available than other times, but more often than not, we have had great working relationships with them. But what we do find is that oftentimes, there are more complaints than there are staff members. And so that affects the turnaround time at everyone's being able to address a particular issue. I list Pope Street under this in that this, this, I believe that the Pope Street case could have, could have been avoided, given some of those adequate resources at that time. If city code enforcement at that time had looked at the property, had done, had followed up on its initial compliance order, this property, the case may have been addressed in other ways. Hindsight is always 20/20, but it is, it is a factor in what happened and what transpired with that case. Pope Street does continue, as a side note, we are continuing to monitor that case, we are continuing to work with the city of St. Helena, and we are working with CAH as well in the, in the project that they have proposed for that site. But we welcome, we welcome your questions and concerns regarding any other existing site where there may be, there may be issues that the agency can address. So potential rental, renter protections and resources. Some of these may not be very popular and maybe even less likely to be implemented, but I needed to make sure that I listed them all as they are different ways of protecting renters, given the current housing climate. Number one is a rent control or stabilization ordinance. There is not a lot of support for this in Napa County in general, I understand that. But to just give a couple of examples of how it can be applied, the city of San Jose applies a rent control stabilization ordinance for the Doradon District, so one district in the entire city, and that protects 492 units of housing only. The city of East Palo Alto doesn't apply their rent stabilization ordinance to any single-family homes. Yes?
I just want to point out that every mobile home park in Napa County, in Sanoma County, other than the mobile home park in St. Helena, have rent stabilization.
And that's, that's a great point. And I was going to get to mobile homes, actually, but thank you for bringing that up. And I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name?
My name's Pat.
Pat. Oh, hi, Pat. Thank you. Thank you for coming. As Pat mentioned, there is rent stabilization in all of the mobile home parks across the county, except for St. Helena. We find also, and what I did not put as either a solution or a resource, is that mobile homes in the county are one of the last truly affordable resources for a lot of people, and especially some, a lot of seniors in this county. So we do pay particularly close attention to those related issues in the mobile homes, which was a lot of the reason for why we went, for why we joined the Napa Valley Community Foundation in implementing the mobile home disaster repair and mitigation program. And it's also a reason why we continue to do a lot of work in the mobile home parks around Napa County.
And has that been blocked here in St. Helena, or has it not been raised twice? Why, or?
Hasn't been raised, maybe this year.
Thank you. So as a, as a last example for, for rent control protections, so as I mentioned, East Palo Alto does not apply them to single-family homes, so that is another way of applying these protections to ensure that rent control is only applied to multifamily housing. And as we know, the city of San Francisco has a much broader-ranging protection regarding rent control. Sure, there are different ways of doing it. It again is based on the need, it's based on the intention of the policy revision itself, and it's based on, on the intention of the government in place. Just-cause eviction protections refer to protections from what I was mentioning earlier as one of the most common issues that we deal with on the landlord-tenant side. And those are just-cause or no-cause evictions, or, I'm sorry, no-cause evictions. A 60-day notice where a landlord can legally provide the notice to vacate without any reason. And so a tenant who is on a month-to-month basis that may have been there for just over a year, or as we've seen in some cases, over 20 years, can receive this notice and then have two months to pack up their belongings and move. In, in addition to the difficulties of relocating, it also puts a considerable strain on that household, particularly if that household is low-income. So just-cause eviction protections are a way of protecting against those types of evictions of mandating that landlords have a just cause to evict a tenant. There are also protections in place in those ordinances for landlords to ensure that they are also able to secure their property should they need to. But, but more than anything, this protection really is an attempt to provide against displacement. And that is one of the biggest issues, I think, that we are seeing across the county. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And lastly, I'll touch on, on the last three very briefly. Increased minimum wage, I listed that there as simply another strategy that people might consider in terms of addressing the housing crisis. Not necessarily the shortage of affordable housing, quote-unquote, but the housing crisis. And then the crisis really boils down to what is affordable for most people and what are most people making. And if you increase the minimum wage, what you are doing is looking to offset local costs of living. We've seen that the state of California is increasing the minimum wage to $15 by the year 2023, with a 50% increase every year moving forward. But we've also seen that the city of Seattle moved straight to a $15 minimum increase right away. So there are different ways of doing it, and there are, and they, they have, you know, distinctly different reasons for implementing them the way they did. But again, another strategy possibly for addressing some of the income-based deficiencies that affect the housing crisis. Tenant counseling is something that we and a number of other advocates, both in this room and around, and around the county, provide. Tenant counseling can not only increase awareness of what a tenant's rights are, what their responsibilities are, but also can increase their awareness of what resources are out there to assist them. If our agency cannot assist you with your issue, we will ensure that somebody can, so that your case is not, is not just closed with no resolution. The same goes for rental assistance programs. Our agency is a common user of the SOS program, which provides a one-time rental assistance to qualifying households, based on income, based on circumstance as well. But this program has helped countless of our clients, and any type of similar program that will be implemented, I'm sure would be put to good use as well. Okay. So continuing to look at local solutions. Continued implementation of the 2015 through 23 housing element goals is a must. Addressing government and non-government impediments, increasing the diversity or continuing to increase the diversity of housing stock, continued efficient land use and high-quality neighborhoods. I know that St. Helena has placed a high priority on this in recent years. It's becoming more apparent, the secondary unit ordinance is one example, but there are other areas in the county that are also seeking to make more efficient use of what limited land they do have. And assistance to support affordable housing. I know that the city currently puts funds into an affordable housing trust fund. That's one way of doing it. There are other ways of providing assistance, as I just showed, with different incentives, with different policy ordinances or policy revisions that could incentivize developers just as much. And the, lastly, and this comes as news to no one, I'm sure, but the continued construction and development of additional units for LMI households, again, low to moderate-income households. As of 2013, the city had met 34% of its RENA goals for affordable housing. And this is per the most recent housing element and needs assessment. I've received updated numbers. I know that there are more, more units that have been approved for development, but as we've also seen, those numbers are not keeping pace with the growth of the county or the city. And so because of that, multi-pronged approaches, as used by OTSH, as used by CAH, as used by other developers and affordable housing advocates, I think are going to be the most effective way of meeting the needs of this city's residents and the needs of the county. And so what we can do, what an agency like ours can do, is continue to spread awareness of existing programs, continue to maintain regular communication with housing advocates, such as CAH, such as our town, St. Helena, and agencies to ensure that resident needs are being met. So if a program is in place, that may not be the final solution. What we may need is a tweak to that program to really make it fit the constituents or the clients that we are seeking to serve. And so it will be the job of all service providers to make sure that we are, are continuing to examine those needs on a consistent basis. Examine new and existing housing programs for compatibility with low-income residents and households. So the home sharing program is one. Micro homes have been shared as a strategy in the past in different, both locally in the city of Napa, as well as in the housing summit that the, that was hosted by the Area on Aging recently, towards the end of 2016. Address additional policies which could potentially affect current, the current housing climate. So this brings up a, the possibility, for example, of a no-cause eviction protection. Depending on other circumstances, a protection like this might be the most effective way to provide some short-term help, prevent displacement. So while new units may not be being built, we're at the very least preventing the displacement of current residents, and in some way affecting the crisis.
Is that something that gets put into place through voting? Or is that?
Yes, it would be, it would be a locally, locally voted-on ordinance. And typically is closely aligned or closely related to a rent stabilization ordinance, I should mention. So I don't, I was looking for examples of cities that had just-cause protections without some sort of rent stabilization. There aren't many, so a lot of them, the protections go hand-in-hand. We, we prevent displacement, but we're also controlling how much you're going to be paying for rent to make sure that that doesn't get out of hand.
Are there simple majority, are there other requirements around that?
I, I would have to get back to you on that.
Tracy, actually, the city council has the authority to adopt that.
Oh. I stand corrected. Thank you, Tom. And so lastly, affirmative, affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a HUD-stated goal, which, given the current administration, may not be in place for long, but which we are currently obligated to uphold. And that is the goal that, no matter what our programs do, that they take meaningful actions to foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics, the protected classes mentioned earlier, and address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunity. So the housing crisis that we are all currently witnessing here in Napa County is just that. It is one of the most significant barriers that one can imagine as far as making housing available to the truly most vulnerable populations of this county. And so in not just speaking with you here today, but in other presentations that our agency does, in our day-to-day work, we seek to address both of those bullet points in addition to our already stated mission statement. The city itself also has an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing as a recipient of federal funds. And so that's where this, this obligation comes up in relation to what the city's responsibilities are. We continue to work with the city of St. Helena. I was working very closely with Ms. Phillips before she left, and look forward to working with NOAA and, and other city staff to ensure that there's not only continued compliance, but that everything being done by the city and with our partnership by us as well, is done to address both of those bullet points and truly provide equal housing choice, not just in St. Helena, but in Napa County. And to, to again, address affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH, as this crisis affects the most vulnerable members of our population, so members of protected classes, families with children, disabled individuals and households, seniors, the Latino community, particularly the monolingual Latino community, this, this obligation, and particularly right now, while it stands, is still very relevant and something that the agency takes very seriously. And as we mentioned, the shortage of affordable housing stock does present a significant barrier to a more inclusive St. Helena in Napa County. Does anybody have, thank you very much, does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Well, I'd like you to comment on page 11, you know about the incentives, and then on page 10, which talks about efficient land use and high-quality neighborhoods, et cetera. And there's incentives, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of research and history that shows that the incentives, especially for, in, in density requirements, build substandard housing for poor people. With more substandard housing for poor people, the standards are in place, so for better housing. So I'm wondering if you guys think, are there lots, a little bit, other ways to subsidize development? There's subsidizations, but to continue to do this subsidizing for, you know, for higher-density, no, you know, that is, I don't, do you think about maybe changing that?
Well, I was very surprised.
Excuse me, Pablo. If you could, repeat the question, that way the viewers that are watching the streaming web version could, because they're not going to be able to hear.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, and where's the camera? So to repeat her question, excuse me, the question was, that research has shown that, excuse me, that the waiving of parking restrictions actually leads to blight, is that?
And density, and setbacks, and, you know, the substandard housing, because those standards are there to keep the housing, you know, headed good, leveled, which they should be, and they should be for poor people, too. So I'm just thinking, aren't there any other ways of, you know, are you guys thinking of that, rather than pushing forward with whole, and I think proved detrimental way, subsidizing?
Well, to be quite honest, all of the research that I found showed that that was not the case, and that the presence of parking requirement, or the waiver of parking requirements and things of that nature actually promoted the more efficient development of affordable housing. So, of, yes, of high-density housing.
Do you have to compare research?
Yes, and I'm happy to, but.
I mean, and I'm talking in terms of, I also believe that that's true, and pushback from communities. So I'm just thinking, there are other reasons to maybe explore other ways to subsidize development.
Sure, sure. And as I mentioned, one, one strategy may not particularly fit any, any given community. We did consider it. I think what is important to remember here is that any incentive needs to be examined in terms of the return that it's going to give, and in terms of what it will ultimately lead to. If, if an incentive is, as you mentioned, could possibly produce blight, could produce other density-related issues, that definitely bears some examination. But from the research that we've seen, it, that, that doesn't seem, that doesn't appear to be the case. I was a bit surprised when initially reading about the waiver of parking requirements that it would be listed as an incentive, but I could, I can, I can see why. And I can also see how that would go about promoting, you know, more, more efficient development. Yes?
I'd just like to mention to Bobby, and to whoever else is listening, that we have three high-density housing units, developments in St. Helena, and there's no blight there. All three of them are extremely well-kept, and there's simply no problem there, which bears out the fact that high-density in St. Helena can work.
I would be, to their.
I would be happy to live in any of the three of them.
Those are managed projects, and I'm not promoting them.
All high-density projects become managed projects. They have to.
Okay. And to...
I mean, projects in New York, I mean, there's so many examples, where concentrations of high-density housing leads to crime and leads to other things, not necessarily holders, but I mean, are you saying that just totally?
I'm not commenting on that answer, actually. I can't answer that. To be frank, I could see where that would be true, but I don't think that the concentrating of multiple-family households is the sole reason why blight or crime or anything else results. That may be a reason, that may be part of the reason why, but I think there are definitely a list of extenuating factors beyond that that affect that outcome.
And for our community, more relevant research would be like geographic areas. I mean, New York City is not even comparable to St. Helena or Napa County. I mean, I think the factors that are existing here in Napa County.
Absolutely, absolutely. Hey.
Research would be more relevant.
And as I've tried to really emphasize in this presentation, which is something that stuck out to me in really reading through all of these strategies, there is not a one-size-fits-all way to do any of these. It really is a combination, you know, with different proportions of given strategies, depending on the population, depending on the city government in place, depending on a list of factors. So while parking requirements may be one of them, it may not end up being an implemented incentive.
Well, there already are, and I'll stop. There already are areas where there are incentives that actually happen, so, I mean, not the areas that these two women are talking about, but there are other places. So, you know, it's, I just think something worth discussing, it shouldn't be off the table, I think we have to really dialogue about it.
I'm happy to chat more with you afterwards. Yes?
One of your slides and explanation was a little bit confusing to me, and that had to do with sexual orientation and sexual identity. And then you started, I believe you had mentioned or carved in something about gender expression and gender identification.
Correct.
And you sort of mix the two together. In my mind, they're totally separate. What is the current state of law? Is gender identification and gender expression a protected class in California when it comes to housing discrimination?
California and the country. And I apologize for smashing them together. That's sort of what happened to the fair housing community. There was a gender-protected category, and the state originally had sexual orientation as a protected class. That was then approved by HUD as a federally protected class and lumped in, so to speak, with the gender protection. So gender now refers to sexual harassment, discrimination based on gender, discrimination based on gender orientation, discrimination based on gender identity. They all fall under the same umbrella. So I apologize if that wasn't clear, but hopefully that clarifies.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And, yes. Hi, ma'am.
Mary Steen, this is Tom, St. Helena. Nice to meet you. This is going to be a loaded question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What can a local city council do?
To incorporate a housing strategy that could help alleviate some of these problems? I had to ask it.
Let me grab my chair real quick, and we'll sit down and talk about this. I think that there's, again, no right or wrong way to go about it. But what I think is absolutely essential is involvement and engagement, not just by city government, not just by developers, not just by advocates, not just by community stakeholders, but by everybody. And in seeing and discussing what the local circumstances are, you can begin to see what is possible, what is feasible, and what is obstructed by some physical or governmental or other type of barrier currently. So really, I believe it takes getting everybody to the table. It takes keeping everybody at the table. But on the other side of things, I also understand that the process of approving housing can be a timely one, that there are sometimes many hoops to jump through. So with that being said, you know, a more streamlined process as well. But that, again, would involve engagement and consistent interaction between stakeholders and the decision-makers, whether that be government or developers or whoever else that may be. And that's a very, very short answer to your question. Yes?
This is a follow-on to that. It may be to you, Pablo, or it may be to Tom. But around the question of rent stabilization and no-cause eviction, if you're saying that that is something that can be done at the city council level, is that something that then becomes our housing element? Is that put into our, when we redo our zones and ordinances? How does that work?
Typically, that's, and Noah would be an excellent person to weigh in on that, but that is a part of a broader housing strategy for a community that started usually at the general plan, housing element level. But yes, it is an issue that doesn't require voter approval. It's one that ultimately the community can ask its city council to consider, and the city council can adopt it if it deems that to be the right policy. I also want to, yeah. One other thing I should correct, too, is that the city of Napa does not have rent stabilization in place. In fact, it has a charter provision prohibiting that. There is the memorandum of understanding that was referred to. And that's what is implemented in the city of Napa for mobile home rent control.
Correct.
How is that different?
Well, so the rent stabilization ordinance only refers to participating parks that are part of the memorandum of understanding within the city of Napa.
And most of them?
Most of them, yes, but not all of them. Yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, back there for it.
Hi. First of all, thank you for coming. This has been very interesting.
Thank you.
I think we all agree we want more affordable housing, and I think there's been a pretty good effort to try to increase that. One of our challenges in St. Helena is that 98% of all low-income, affordable, and multifamily rental homes are on the east side of the city, basically between Montevista and McCorkle to the Napa River. And that's a number that comes right out of the housing element. That's the number the city came up with, and that's the number we've been using. There are some affordable, well, I shouldn't, affordable made me a misnomer. There are some subsidized housing, single-family and townhouses on the west side, but the latest one to be built, Magnolia Oaks, was $470,000 in required incomes of, in excess of $90,000. So it's not low income. I mean, it's affordable for middle income, but it's certainly not for low income. Do you think one of the answers, in addition to potentially incentives, to create a more diverse community throughout Napa, I mean, throughout St. Helena, both east side and west side? And you have to remember, all the infrastructure is on the west side, and all the low-income housing and affordable rental housing is on the east side, that we look to change some of the land use on the west side as well as some of the zoning to encourage the blending of that housing throughout our entire community?
I definitely think it's worth examining. Without all of the answers in place, it's hard for me to say that that is exactly what should take place. But with that type of disparity in the development of, let's call it, market rate housing or affordable housing, it definitely bears some examining. And what you want to do, or what, you know, what many cities and localities strive to do, as they should, to maintain inclusiveness in all of their jurisdiction, is to spread out affordable housing and not segregate it to one particular area of the city. Now, that's also, you know, due to different circumstances. The city of St. Helena lays on a lot of agricultural land. Where you can go, east and west is somewhat limited. You've got the mountains on one side, and you have a whole lot of vineyards on the others. So it's definitely worth examining, but again, you have to look at local circumstances and local dynamics to truly be able to say, this is a segregated, not an exclusionary policy, this is not inclusive in any type of way, versus saying, you know, we can tweak this a little bit and make it even more inclusive.
Are there any other questions that would like to fair housing?
I'd just like to point out something that may be obvious, but the west side of town was developed before the east side. As a consequence of that, there are almost no large lots on the west side of town that can be developed for affordable housing. There are some in the key opportunity sites, and I say this from my experience of having been not only a housing advocate for years, but of having been on the Affordable Housing Committee. Those sites on the west side of town, the owners of those sites received a letter from the Affordable Housing Committee asking if they would be willing to sell that property to use for affordable housing. Most owners didn't respond. The ones that responded said no. So that leaves you with not too many options. You would have to do, what do you call it when you take the land from people? You'd have to do eminent domain, which is a very uncomfortable, politically explosive thing to do. Or you would have to, another technique might be to buy two or three houses adjacent to each other that are old and need to be destroyed, and then put high-density housing there. But this is not a simple solution, just to build more housing on the west side. It's a very complicated problem.
I have a question.
Speaker here is really, here dealing with the question of fair housing and this area of expertise, I don't know if he's here.
I have another question.
Just a minute, please, Ms. Manette.
I have a different question. It's not on that topic, and I really appreciate the dialogue that started, though. On page two, you talked about the victims of discrimination, and at the bottom it said, you know, you did complaint monitoring, which I think is wonderful. But I'm just wondering, after that, if you do find something wrong after that, what can you do? Do you have any enforcement abilities or what can you do?
It would depend on what had taken place originally with that settlement. So if the settlement involved monetary damages, then that would have to be something that would be considered. If the settlement involved a mediation or conciliation process with an administrative entity, so such as HUD or the DFEH, that would also have to be considered, because then we would have to report it to them. So it depends on the nature of the case, the severity of the case. If the initial settlement was minimal, then we may move up the next level. But if the initial violation was egregious, and there continues to be no addressing of the issues at hand or of the discriminatory practices, then we may have to file in federal court or move forward with the help of an attorney.
Mine is more of a comment, excuse me, than a question. I just wanted to comment that I think St. Helena is 6,000 people, and I want to congratulate St. Helena for the amazing job that it has done for decades in terms of affordable housing. Sure, there is plenty more to do, and we can all see that we're all doing a lot to try to make that happen. But just want to say a couple of things. You know, we've recently renegotiated the Stonebridge loan to renovate 80 units at Stonebridge, which is wonderful for those folks, at the cost of hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to the city. Assisted in the purchase of the original Stonebridge apartments, we purchased a half-an-acre of land for the new Brankell Court ownership, self-help, which is awesome. The Turley Project is here looking for additional monies that have, it's already been funded by the city pretty significantly with lots of waivers. I think that's fabulous. Hunts Grove apartment sits on city land. I don't know if everybody knows that, but that's city-owned land that that entire apartment complex sits on. The city constructed a parking lot for Hunts Grove when they didn't have enough spaces at the cost to the city. We've had CBDG grants, waived water neutrality requirements that everyone else has to obey, and we've had a temporary relocation ordinance put in place, a law, so that landlords cannot do terrible things, and people have to leave their apartments with no place to go. We, you know, there's an ordinance to help refund and make sure those people have temporary housing costs covered. So with all the things we have to do, and I agree we do, I want to congratulate the city of St. Helena and the taxpayers and the city and the councils over the years that have done really what I believe to be, for a teeny-tiny city, a very excellent job to get 256 restricted affordable housing units, either ownership or marketplace, built and approved. And I think that's pretty darn impressive. That's about 9% of our housing stock. So I know there's a lot to do, but I think we should congratulate ourselves on the excellent work that the city has done.
Thank you. And it's not my intention in providing this presentation to present a doom and gloom situation. We all realize that there's a lot of work to be done out there. There's been plenty of good work done, not just by the city of St. Helena, but by advocates and stakeholders and local governments across the county. And so I think everyone's goal is that these efforts continue, that they are doubled, if possible, or tripled, if necessary, and that we continue to strive to meet the needs that you just mentioned. So thank you for your comment.
Are there further questions? Not, then let me thank our speaker. We most enjoyed your presentation.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We will adjourn until 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.